I'm Graham Warwick, Executive Editor, Technology at Aviation Week. And we have a great panel here to talk about Air Force VTOL. I think it's a really interesting time. The Air Force, like all the services, but probably in some ways more than some of the services, is faces quite a challenge to modernize its force to support the pivot to the Pacific. And has going to have to make some really difficult, or is making some really difficult decisions in order to enable that modernization and to get the types of platforms that it needs to operate in the Pacific at much greater distances than it's traditionally had to. And I think that's a particular challenge for VTOL, but in some ways, you know, as when we get to the more advanced VTOL, it may be an opportunity as well. So maybe we'll get into some of that today. So I will kick off by asking, whoops, I apologize. So our first speaker is Colonel Charles Tron McMullin. Tron is the USAireforce's Deputy Director at Global Reach. He is a pilot with more than 2,300 flight hours, test pilot and operational pilot, combat rescue pilot. He's flown more than 20 different aircraft types, including the Combat Rescue H-860G and the CV-22, which are among some of the platforms that face some of the greatest challenges in pivoting over to a much longer range of operations. So Tron, do you want to go first?
Yeah. I'm going to try and present to you guys a baseline of where we're starting from, what Air Force programs we have. Generate some questions, hopefully in your guys' minds, so that way, as we move on to listening to the other two speakers, you guys have got some good questions you can ask us, and then we can continue to work on a dialogue back and forth, because you know, the Air Force doesn't have all the answers. You guys don't have all the answers together, we'll come up with something for the future. So we're going to go over what the Global Reach Program's portfolio actually is, because I understand a lot of people don't know what that is, what we do in the Pentagon. We're going to talk about contested logistics and how VTOL can actually play a part in solving some of those problems. What I call the first and last mile, really where I think the niche of Air Force VTOL lies, and then does everybody really need to hover? All right, so Global Reach programs, you can see, we've got a pretty big portfolio, about $6 billion every year that we spend on procurement and modification, sustainment of the platforms you can see up there. I know you guys don't really care too much about the strategic airlift or the tanker side, but as we move into the future, it's actually going to be pretty vital in how everything integrates in with that logistics piece. As we move over onto the other side, you can see some of the other platforms that we do have that you guys do care about. So CV-22s, 60 Gulf, 60W, and the MH-139 are ones that we've heard talked about quite a bit so far this week. All right, so what you guys really care about are VTOL platforms that are within our portfolio. So the UH-1N is a platform that we're replacing right now with the MH-139. The 60 Gulf is being recapitalized with the 60W. CV-22s, still to be seen, what the future lies for that capability. And then Agility Prime and High-Speed VTOL are kind of on the horizon for us, things that we're looking at. I'm not going to talk about either of those programs, because I've got two people here that are joining me that will be able to answer a lot more questions on that than me. But one, you know, now we can kind of get into the baselining, where we're really starting from. You know, I do get to hear a lot about some of the new EVTOLs, some of the new capability within the vertical lift platforms. And there, I continually run into areas where, on the industry side, we just don't have the same understanding, same starting point, on what is it, what is the capability that I'm really looking for? And I don't want to say this in a way that I, I hope you guys understand, I know they're stepping stones, and we need to work our way where we need to go. But I'd like for everybody at least to have a vision of where we're trying to get to. So in the category of platforms that we want to replace with a next-gen VTOL, you know, we need something that actually does more than the platform that it's replacing. So if we look at a 60 Gulf, move into the 60W, the 60W, the Air Force took 160 knot-capable Blackhawk, and we made it 125 knot cruise platform. And you have to ask yourself, you know, while we're in the middle of talking about trying to go faster, go further, why in the world would the Air Force take a reasonably fast helicopter and make it slower? Well, the 60W cruising at 125 knots can go 400 miles or 200 nautical mile combat radius to include a 10-foot hover, or 10-minute hover in any of the environments we want to go to. And we're going to carry a crew of six. We're going to pick up two survivors. We're slinging a pair of 50 cows. We have additional armor, so that way, 23-millimeter HE rounds, we can handle taking a couple hits. We've got EW defensive systems, we've got IR defensive systems. We've taken the baseline Blackhawk, and on initial takeoff, we're going to be flying around 22,000 pounds. And those are not all the nice-to-haves, those are the must-haves. So as we start looking at future VTOL platforms that are going to try and fill that capability, we need to make sure that we're going further, faster, with all of the capability that we know we need to execute the mission. So if it can't defend itself, it can't take some damage, doesn't have all of the communication capability, you know, five voice radios, a data link, all weather capable, and then we're going to be missing the mark. So kind of a high bar to get to, and it's going to take a lot of work back and forth between you guys and us to fill those new capabilities. Just to kind of give, level set you guys to, on, you know, if you talk to me one-on-one, I'll tell you, Blackhawk's the greatest helicopter ever produced, and the reason I say that is because I'm alive because of that aircraft. I know that someday somebody's going to make a better one. But that picture on the right-hand side of the screen there is actually my helicopter that we were flying in Afghanistan. We took an RPG. The RPG exploded in the transition bay, did some significant damage. That aircraft actually brought me home. We jumped on a C-130, because now I didn't have a ride anymore, flew me back to Kandahar, I got another helicopter, and I went back to work. So that aircraft right there, took them like two years to rebuild it, because it had so much damage, but it did bring me home. It did complete the rescue, as we were bringing an Estonian military member back to the hospital so that he could get taken care of. The aircraft that you see there, the RPG came in, one side, exploded, did damage to the engine, did damage to three rotor blades, took out half of our fuel system, removed a lot of the electronics that were in the back of the aircraft, exited out the other side. The damage that you're looking at in the picture actually goes through the entire bottom of the helicopter. The only thing that is holding that helicopter together, by the time we land, it was 12 rivets in the top part of the tail boom. And the bird still flew the way it was supposed to. Those are the kind of things that military VTOL platforms are going to need to be able to survive. All right, so then we move into contested logistics, and this is the area where, the way I like to look at it is, I'm not replacing a capability that we currently have, I am expanding into new territory, things that the Air Force has not normally done. So the driving force to these new ideas, you'll hear ACE, you'll hear contested logistics, it's because when we're talking about a peer adversary who has watched us for the last 40 years, and how we do business, has identified that our runways are our vulnerability. So our amazing logistics trains that we can put together require runways. And so our adversaries have figured that out. So being runway independent, whenever we need to operate within our enemy's whizzes, is going to be key to the future. So that's really the gap that, at least I personally see in the future, that VTOL is going to be able to fill. So our fixed-wing assets that need runways, that are able to move large quantities of cargo, are going to be moving into a specific airfield that is a defendable airfield, and then from there, we've got to get it to the point of need. And then the point of need will then also be, we'll need to bring things back. And platforms that do not need runways are going to be the only thing that's going to operate in that environment. All right, so then, the idea with the first mile, last mile, you know, so we've talked about kind of filling that gap from the runway to the point of need, being really that last mile. You know, there's a picture of one of the convoys that's moving supplies through Iraq. And we were doing the same thing in Afghanistan. So, you know, 20 years of logistics, bring it off the ship, bring it off the aircraft, and then put it on a truck and drive it. I don't know if you guys have noticed, but there aren't too many roads going through southeast, through the oceans, off the coast of China. A lot of islands, no roads. So figuring out how we're going to accomplish that last mile. If I give you the scenario with aero evacuation, we could put that into a consistent chain that is personnel recovery. And the first mile is going to be when someone either has an isolating event, or they're injured, and they need to be brought back to the States to talk through an entire chain. So I have to have a platform that can go to, again, to the point of need, bring the survivor or the isolated person back to where those airfields are, where our fast and efficient fixed-wing aircraft can operate from, bring them back to a higher level of care. And depending on how many people are being brought back, we may actually need the ability to move from those even stateside airfields to our hospitals. So a platform that can go from Scott Air Force Base, where most of the MAF brings things back to, into the United States, and then deliver them to helipads in civilian hospitals. So, you know, there's capability gaps, and there's manpower gaps, that we're trying to figure out how to fill with some of these new capabilities. Because the Air Force has relied on other services that we actually can't count on being in the environment that we're going to be going into. And especially back here at home, moving wounded from an Air Force Base to a civilian hospital en masse, is going to be a very difficult task to accomplish. And I'm pretty sure there are people sitting in the audience that have ideas on how you could do that. All right, so then the idea, you know, there's this desire to have one platform that can do it all, right? I can take off from the United States, I can fly all the way to Guam, and Guam doesn't need an airfield. So it can still hover, fly it out over the ocean, do a hoist, pull somebody out of the water, and then fly all the way back to the States. That's a really, really big ask. The thing that I'm hoping people can start to think about, as we're talking about runway independence, is, does that really mean that I have to hover? And the engineering problem becomes a whole lot easier if I say I don't have to hover, or I don't have to do an extended hover. So going back to the same, the old ideas of what is STOL, what is VTOL, what is a platform that can actually do that extended AIE hoist, sling load, I think that's a job for the Air Force to do, is to figure out what missions do I really need to do? And, you know, same thing for the Navy, you know, if I'm doing vert rep, am I doing hoist? Am I doing slings? Fast ropes? How often do I really need to pull somebody off the side of a mountain? And how many platforms do I need that are capable of that? Versus one that can drop off three standard pallets of supplies without a runway? Do I really need to be able to hover to do that? And I think if we can get to that point, and then understanding, you know, your guys' problem sets that you have, when we put these constraints on you, in that dialogue back and forth, how much easier of a problem, an engineering problem, does it make for you guys, when I say it doesn't have to do that 10-minute hoist over the water? All I really need to do is just be able to land to a point and take off from a point. And then, how big does that point really need to be? Is it the size of the aircraft, or can we go with 10 aircraft lengths is plenty? All right, so gave you the overview of kind of what platforms that we're at least looking at. We talked about congested, contested logistics, from at least my point of view, that first and last mile, and then, does everybody really need to be the greatest pilots in the world and be able to hover? Or can we have some that are restricted aviators?
It's kind of weird, really. I mean, I entered the aerospace industry in 1978, worked at Hawke's Sittily on the Harrier, and trying to replace the Harrier, and that was all about, you know, vulnerable runways. Here we are, back talking about vulnerable runways again. Of course, it was the Harrier that taught us that you actually don't need VSTOL, you need STOVL, i.e. you don't need to do it at both ends. You know, there's a way of doing it where you don't have to do it.
Exactly.
And we learned that, but we only learned it by having something that could do it in the first place.
Right. Got to learn it again.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, so our next panelist, thank you, Tron, our next panelist is Lieutenant Colonel John WASP Teckel. WASP is the Agility Prime Program Lead at the USAireforce's AFWorks Innovation Unit. He joined the Air Force in 2015, and was a Flight Commander at Holloman, and an Insistent Director of Operations at Eglin, so WASP.
Good afternoon, Lieutenant Colonel John Teckel, I go by WASP, as was introduced here. I'm really happy to be here today, and thank you for the VFS staff for inviting us to speak on this panel, for Air Force VTOL. I'm glad to see so many people here today that are thirsty for information about what we're doing, and what this panel is doing. And hopefully I can give some insight into the latest work we're managing in the AFWorks Agility Prime Program. I'll start today with a few overviews, to help kind of orient everyone with respect to what is AFWorks, and what is Prime, what's Agility Prime. So AFWorks was started in 2017 by the Secretary of the Air Force, and then moved under the research labs in its current state, but with a direct report to Mr. Hunter, our Senior Acquisition Executive for our Strategic Guidance. And since 2020, really, we've scaled AFWorks significantly to a current workforce of several hundred people, so grown the organization. It was kind of a startup within the Air Force to see how we were going to have an innovation program. And then, once we saw some successes, we have scaled that significantly over the last three years. Most of the people that I'm talking about are focused in Air Force Ventures, and that's the venture capital arm of the Air Force, and responsible for the Air Force Small Business Innovation and Research Budget and its execution. There are a few others in the organization that manage the AFWorks Spark Division, which focuses on scaling and funding innovative ideas from our own airmen. So how do we get the good ideas from all the research that industry's putting out with its 500% greater R&amp;D budget than the entire federal R&amp;D budget? And then how do we get the good ideas from our own airmen and scale those ideas as well? Then we have the Prime Division, which is where Agility Prime lives, and we're looking for pathways to keep new technologies that solve DOD problems from what we call falling into the acquisition valley of death. All these divisions work together, under the AFWorks banner, to connect with industry and solve challenges for the Department of the Air Force. So before I leave this slide, I want to highlight a few of the pictures. If, first in the upper left, if you see two Air Force pilots doing a pre-flight check of the Joby S-4. If you've been following media releases, we just expanded our contract with Joby, and completed flight training for four pilots that remotely flew the Joby S-4 as pilot and command. So it was a big first-time operation for Agility Prime and our program. We've been working with beta technologies in the upper-right picture, as they continue their developmental test program. And we have some interesting plans coming for that aircraft, maybe, hopefully I can share those maybe at the next VFS. In the middle-left, you'll see an image, you can see Moog's Surefly 250, and you'll notice that there's not a pilot. Moog has been doing some really interesting work out at Springfield Buckley Airport in Ohio. And if you plan on attending the Ohio Air Mobility Industry Forum this September, I think we hope to see that aircraft back there from some other activities it's going to leave for. And then, in the middle-right, then that's where you see Archer. And again, if you've been following their social media posts and their activities, they've been working hard to get their first midnight aircraft prepared for flight test. And then, in the lower quadrant, still working with Elroy, highly anticipating their first flight, and then flight-following activities with Cora. Next slide here. Agility Prime is one of the Prime Programs, and I'll focus on that one today. We'll focus on Agility Prime, just because it's the vertical lift form, but there's Autonomy Prime, which is very closely related. There's been a lot of responses from industry for Autonomy Prime, and that effort is really getting underway internally, and expect some more activity with our industry partners shortly. On the left, you'll see a few key milestones that, I just included on here to kind of help you understand the scope of the program. And then I'll talk about what, how, and why for Agility Prime. I think we've been preaching this since early 2020, but we really see hybrid and electric VTOLs as a revolution in aerospace, the third revolution in aerospace. And I think if you browse through the hundreds of designs that the Vertical Flight Society here tries to keep up with on their webpage, under their EVTOL directory, you'll see what I'm talking about. Even as venture capital has become a little bit harder to come by over the last year, these companies are really leveraging key technology areas, like distributed propulsion from the electric motors, autonomy, and simplified vehicle operations, as well as the additive manufacturing, that bring our overall costs down for these platforms, and provide many of the vehicles for advanced air mobility. So Agility Prime is doing this by providing, or trying to provide, risk reduction for these domestic companies. I think our biggest value proposition to date has probably been reducing risk for airworthiness certification, so providing research assets, facilities that the government owns, to these companies that have participated in our Agility Prime air race, and then helping reduce their risk, and giving them an initial airworthiness assessment beyond what they're doing towards type certification, or if it's just an ultralight, beyond what they've done to get their X ticket, or participate in the market as an ultralight. The why is really the US Air Force is doing, we need to enable these new logistics platforms. As Tron just mentioned, we have new problem sets for distributed logistics, and these platforms are absolutely certainly part of that solution set that we're considering. I really wanted to take a few moments in this presentation and this group to highlight some of the recent and upcoming government initiatives for advanced air mobility. October of last year marks the start of the Advanced Air Mobility Coordination and Leadership Act, which designated the Department of Transportation as the lead government agency to develop a national strategy for AAM. The DOT has, was able to gather the agencies listed, and then invite, they invited me to speak from a Department of Defense perspective on the work that Agility Prime has been doing in advanced air mobility this March. And as part of the national strategy, the DOT needs to hear from the community. So they've put together a request for information, coordinated that, RFI, among most of the government agencies listed here, so quite a feat, and will release that soon, so look for that. Request for information from the Department of Transportation, please provide good feedback for this national strategy. That'll be your opportunity for strategic input, and just, again, look for this from the DOT coming soon. Give quality inputs, because it will affect your business, it'll affect your research in the future, transformative vertical lift market. Other things that we're doing, so Agility Prime's not just about the aircraft, we recognize that there's a whole ecosystem that has to be developed around the airspace to look at the density, and address potential density and saturation of traditional air traffic control. So lots of problem sets associated with just airspace, so that is a big part of our portfolio. I've stood up a whole new team with an Agility Prime to address this, and looking forward to setting up a proving ground with a federal USS system, so that's a service provider, so that PSUs can come in, connect to this USS system, and we can act as a tech scout. And wherever these technologies show promise, then Agility Prime can look for Program Executive Office, or act as that program office in the interim to scale and get these solutions out to the field as part of our technology transition plan. So some of the things that we're really trying to do here is that is associated with UTM. So it enables safe operation of UAS in the national airspace system, and we'll be able to handle the volume of traffic in the same airspace with EVTOLs. Our users for the federal USS system with UTM and commercial PSUs will be our military air traffic control, and then base defense operations as well. It really gives us new capabilities, so air domain awareness of manned and UAS flight activities. It enables configuration, or configurable situational awareness of our managed airspace. The UTM operations, so operational intent, constraint management, deconfliction, remote ID, and blue UAS, IFF. So this is our initial product that will be available for our airspace integration at our proving grounds, but we also plan on bringing in, when aircraft are available, multiple OEMs to these proving grounds, and do some initial integration, work with them, excuse me, and give them an opportunity to work with some of the PSUs, where I don't think there's really a connective tissue. There's a little bit through like New Air and some other commercial capabilities in North Dakota, but not really a military capability to integrate airspace along with some of the new platforms. Some of the other infrastructure that we're looking at is battery energy storage solutions. So we have another team, logistics team, some of them are here today, I'm sure. There are many out there in the crowd that are curious about the charging infrastructure that go along with EVTOLs or hybrid EVTOLs. And from my perspective, I'm concerned about deployable charging infrastructure. I have some of our logistics team here, like I said, in the crowd today, and if you have any questions about what we're doing here, I think they can give you a lot more technical details, and I'll connect you with them later this afternoon if you're interested. But the point I want to make on this slide is, we have a lot of DOD collaboration in this space. Agility Prime brought a unique perspective to what was being traditionally thought of for this, though, in that we were wanting to charge the electric aircraft with them. And I think previously, they were mostly focused on just an alternate base power solution or microgrid for other base operations, but having unique requirements for electric vehicles was brought to the table. This is a starting point, right? And these battery energy storage solutions allow the military to build up logistics support away from traditional test sites, and then move those logistics across the nation and eventually internationally. So we also are very concerned about manufacturing. So many in this forum also have either a considerable knowledge of manufacturing, or that's what you do for a living, so I'm not going to lie too much on this slide. So Agility Prime is working to keep accurate manufacturing readiness levels of each of our OEMs. We're also working to maintain We're also working to maintain sustainment maturity levels as well for each of these companies, so that we understand where they are in their production capability. AP, we're really looking forward to the first aircraft coming from manufacturing facilities. And I think industry is starting to shift their mindset to go along with that from prototype development to type conforming aircraft production. And those are two wildly different problem sets. And I think that with the hiring and the mentality is shifting in that direction. As this happens, Agility Prime will continue to, our current lines of effort, right? We're not planning to abandon any of our lines of effort, but we also are starting to look at some second generation designs and capabilities that will come as follow-on to these initial products, so that these companies can stay innovative and stay creative and stay competitive in the market. That's all I prepared for today. So thank you all for taking the time to attend today. And if you have any additional questions, I'll be around the audience if you're too shy to ask here, but absolutely, I'll answer whatever you have.
Thank you, Wes. So it's interesting. I know you've got, you're starting to work with the other services. And when we've heard in the other briefings, they've all talked about the need, you know, that they're moving to engage with electric and hybrid and start to talk about it. So we'll get to that. So thank you. Our third panelist is. I'll get there. If I can work out which page it is. There we go. Rachel Bellanova is Explore Team Lead within the Transformational Capabilities Office, which supports leaperhead capability generation as part of the Air Force Research Laboratory. Before AFRL, she was with the Directorate that was supporting the Minuteman ICBM. That's a point of need, quick delivery, I think, or something.
Just a little bit. Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Really excited to be here to provide an overview of what we did as part of the high-speed vertical takeoff and landing market feasibility study. So to provide some context before we jump into it, the team that I lead, Explore, is primarily focused at sourcing external solutions from the national ecosystem. And we do that against capability gaps, demand signals that we receive. So back in 2021, we were approached. There was a lot of interest, a lot of people talking about high-speed VTOL, but not a lot of concrete data to showcase what solutions were and technologies were available within industry. So that's kind of where this feasibility study comes in. And so going through some of the conclusions and just what we did during it. So we'll go to the next slide. So Tron kind of spoke to this a bit in terms of current operations. It's current operations utilize a phased approach and utilizes fixed and rotary wing aircraft together, which has a very significant logistics burden associated with it. They do require having not only fixed runways, but typically pristine or in good condition runways. And often, the response time is late to need. So when high-speed VTOL was started, the idea was to look at that next-gen platform able to conduct runway independent operations in potentially austere and improvised locations, while also looking at how to reduce that logistics and maintenance burdens while also increasing our response time. And in particular, we focused on four different mission areas for this study, being infill and exfil of SOF, personnel recovery, CSAR, aeromedical evacuation, and tactical mobility. So we didn't want to drive the solution space, but we did want to provide some bounds. So we created a set of attributes that were important to us and that we wanted industry to consider when they were creating their solutions. Now, in the study itself, there were numbers associated with these. I am not able to share those here, but this gives you kind of a snapshot of what we were interested in. Primarily, speed, range, and payload were very important to us. We want jet-like speeds, able to get into theater quickly, something that can transition from vertical to horizontal flight, and able to go further and take more with it, as well as considering that air refueling capacity. With the survivability piece, going back to that austere improvised location, trying to understand what was available for a more ruggedized platform with increased maneuverability. And we were also primarily interested in optional manning under the integration piece, as well as how a solution or these solutions could integrate with current systems and networks. And then Tron also hit on this, hover. We did put a hover, not requirement, but desirement in this feasibility study to understand what solutions could hover, as well as what that downwash environment looked like. And before we leave this slide, I do want to hit on that these were desired attributes. These are not requirements, just things that we were interested in seeing how these solutions could meet. So we recognize that high-speed VTOL is a very difficult challenge, and there are many pacing technical challenges involved with it. We primarily focused on four of them that we were trying to seek solutions and information against. Primarily, the design configuration. We were very interested in seeing what designs were capable of achieving one or multiple mission areas that I mentioned. And we recognized that propulsion is one of the most significant technical challenges involved with high-speed VTOLs. So we really wanted to understand what other propulsion technologies existed to further this potential capability along. Since we were interested in optional manning, we wanted to understand, you know, the autonomy challenge, what advancements and sensors needed to be seen. And then finally, that human factor. If we are trying to create a vehicle that goes through multiple different flight profiles, different mission areas, what is the impact to the pilots that now have to operate those vehicles and go through those different missionary needs? So this slide just speaks to AFRL industry engagements and wanted to highlight that this wasn't only done in my division. The Aerospace Systems Directorate, AFRLRQ, also had a couple of different industry engagements that some of you all may have supported. But this brief specifically is only talking about what my organization, the Transformational Capabilities Office, invested in. And in particular, I did want to point out that essentially, the last two years spent on high-speed VTOL is wrapping up this month. So really have appreciated the engagement that we've had from industry. And another note I really wanted to make was just the partnering involved in this study. It might not have been very apparent outside looking in, but there were some very significant partnering and ideas that helped shape what this study was and what we learned from this study. So in particular, this was a joint effort ran by my organization and Special Operations Command, specifically the Fixed Wing Program Executive Office, so constant collaboration there. We also had significant SME and stakeholder support, both operating from that technical perspective and as individual project leads who helped the different companies and supported them throughout the entirety of the effort. So you can see the different AFRL groups that supported. And then I also wanted to highlight, Air Force Futures was very involved in this. They helped set a lot of those original desired attributes that you all saw. We also had some significant involvement from AFSLAC and MITRE, as well as the Army and the Marines. So what was the goal of this study? We were trying to understand at the beginning of all this, the best way to see what was possible near term and what was going to need some further advancements. So how we decided to do that was by creating essentially two designs that we wanted to target and understand fully. So that was broken up as part of Phase One, which was a six-month, essentially just feasibility assessment in terms of an FY25 small demonstrator and FY30-plus advanced demonstrator. So with the FY25, the goal here was to understand near term, what could be possible within the next few years if funding went against it immediately. And we particularly focused on a small asset because of our current interpretation of what propulsion technology existed. You can see there, we kind of used a legacy system as a capability baseline. So with the small, it was trying to see what could surpass NHH60 in terms of their current capability. But I do want to caveat that this was not our, we were not trying to replace this, these systems. This was merely a baseline that could be used for the contractors. So I wanted to put that there. But with the FY30-plus demonstrator, the goal here was to understand, well, what could be possible in the future years and what advancements in technology were going to be needed to get there, with a goal to see how those designs would compare to something like the CV22. This really allowed us to look at, again, two different size classes to understand what scaling opportunities existed. But it also allowed us to really focus in on very specific design aspects of each, which was really beneficial. And partway through Phase One, we realized that we had a few more questions that we wanted to have answered before we concluded a market feasibility study. So we continued forward in terms of a Phase 1A, where we took a smaller subset of our contractors and moved them forward to continue to focus on their two designs in relation to some of the information we wanted to further understand. But we also were really curious about their digital engineering capabilities, particularly what they were using and how they were using it. So a major goal out of the Phase 1A study was also to understand that aspect, since we are trying to utilize digital engineering more and more with every day. So a bit about the kind of call parameters. So this was an AFWorks Challenge market call. So the AFWorks team has been very instrumental in how this has been conducted. So the call went out again in 2021-ish, and we had a really great response. So 218 different novel solutions provided to us, some from a complete aircraft design perspective, some from the component or subsystem perspective. Those ultimately went into virtual and in-person pitches. And ultimately, we selected 11 contractors to initially move forward with, nine of which provided full design solutions and two provided that propulsion subsystem design solution. And these truly did span a number of different concepts. We did not focus on any one way that high-speed VTOL could be solved. They truly just kind of spanned the horizon of how an aircraft could do vertical flight or VTOL vertical takeoff and landing. And to note, again, from the 11, we did take six forward in terms of Phase 1A, of which you can see here, five again focused on the full design solution aspect and one focused on the propulsion subsystem. So during this, we also had a parallel analytic effort going on to help us further understand the trade space. This was done utilizing a value-focused hierarchy that I will show you in the next slide. I am limited in terms of how much I can show from this, so there's only two slides, this one and the next, to really highlight what we did here. But I really want to emphasize, this was not done to drive any design changes. This was truly just for us to understand again what high-speed VTOL solutions existed and how they were meeting mission area needs as described from the different stakeholder groups. And what I mean by that is, as you see on the screen, essentially, we worked with multiple different stakeholder groups to categorize what was important and then collect them into these eight different tiers. And each stakeholder group also provided a weight. So with the different mission areas, obviously, there are some things that are more important to that specific mission area than others. You can see the dots there signifying the different, the large collective groups we worked with. Air Force Futures, again, being kind of that future force driver. We also had personnel recovery, aeromedical evacuation, which also included, or tactical mobility, which also included aeromedical evac, and then personnel recovery. So with these different attributes and weights, again, that I cannot share, we were able to effectively take the data provided from the contractors and correlate it to these different attributes and plot how, within that moment in time and with the data received, how these designs were meeting the different mission areas. And as an example, I mean, with tactical mobility, something that requires a large payload capacity, you can imagine that a small high-speed VTOL demonstrator probably didn't rank really well in terms of cargo, right? So that just kind of gives you an extreme of how this allowed us to see not only how it was meeting missionary needs, but then we also baselined it against those legacy systems that I provided earlier, the HH60 and the CV22, to see how those designs were also comparing to that in the mission area space. So ultimately, this all kind of correlated into our market assessment. So again, this is concluding in totality for AFRL at the end of the month. So a lot of this is based off of current findings. And I think the largest one to note is the very first bullet, that based on what we saw, we do believe that a small high-speed VTOL demonstrator is capable in the near term. Obviously, the designs had varying degrees of success with different mission areas, but based on everything we've seen, we do think there are some very unique capabilities for a small demonstrator in that near term. But conversely, with the large, a larger platform, based on what we saw, that is not possible if you have a very strict high-speed VTOL need associated with it. In particular, the propulsion is just not there to really provide that vertical and horizontal flight. And in particular, something to kind of note here was, and going again back to what Tron had mentioned, that hover piece and just vertical takeoff in general. With a larger capability platform, do we need it to hover? Does it need to be high-speed VTOL? Could it be stow? Could it be stovle? Depending on how those requirements shape up and are provided in a future capacity, there is a lot of really unique space for a solution in that area. And essentially, that was kind of our takeaway point, that the requirements are really going to drive what these capabilities look like. But depending on how those requirements shape up, based on what we've seen through this market feasibility study, there are very novel and unique solutions to getting after this capability. And that was my last slide.
Thank you. Right, folks, so I'll get started, but I would please, we will get to questions. You guys have probably got a lot more questions than I have. So Tron, I just wanted to, this is actually your suggested question, so I'll just, I'll start there. So what do you think is the biggest hurdle the Air Force faces in incorporating these new VTOL capabilities?
I would almost categorize it as a cognitive disconnect with much of the leadership within the Air Force. The, what is VTOL? You know, the idea of, do I need to hover? You know, like, and so what's a long enough runway? What's, you know, how short can we get? What mission sets do I really need to accomplish? And most of us, we, in the military, we spend a period of time in one capability, in one stove-piped career field. You know, if I fly fighters, I'm going to fly fighters my whole career. If I fly cargo, I'll fly cargo my whole career. Rescue, SOF, you know, it's kind of the same thing. And then as you start moving up, you know, everybody looks at you as a senior military member, and you obviously know everything. So we get asked these questions, and people continue to make suggestions in a portion of the flight envelope that they've never experienced. So, you know, I would never suggest how, what the future of fighters look like. I have no experience in that. And I would hope, and in essence, what I'm saying is, we are not doing this. We have people that have never flown in the VTOL world are making decisions on what VTOL can do. So that cognitive disconnect on what do you really know?
Surely, the presenting problem, which is runway vulnerability, affects all platforms. So I mean, the Air Force has to, at some level, say, all of our platforms have a problem. And I wonder, you know, this is already, you know, a bag of it here. When Boeing Australia brought the Ghost bat out, there was a lot of discussion about the fact that needed to be, that needed to be zero-length launched, because you had to forward deploy it in order for it to be able to support the aircraft. You couldn't launch it from Australia and expect it to get somewhere. So they were already thinking about that. Now, I mean, we've got collaborative combat aircraft coming along. We've got all this, you know, I suspect that whatever the sixth gen fighter is, you don't want it to take off vertically, it'd be too compromised. But you've got all these other things. But you've got all these other things that the Air Force needs to do, that runways are a problem. So is there some sort of higher level real thinking about, come on, let's get, let's tackle the real problem and see how that flows down into what we actually need. And then you get maybe get some sensible thinking about VTOL at the top level, because you're not, you don't have this hang up with hover with everybody type thing. You're talking about runway vulnerability.
Yeah, so so to 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 put a finer point on it, you know, everybody admits that we need to to get runway independence. But then when you look at how you get runway independence and with looking at current technology, if I if I have spent my career flying at 30,000 feet and I need radar stealth, then everything looks like that to you, you know, if if all I have is a hammer, everything's a nail. They and then as soon as you put a rotor on something, you know, I really can't manage that radar signature sufficiently enough. But do I have to, you know, if, you know, I've spent almost all of my career flying at 50 feet. Because I didn't want to be taken down by all the platforms that were going after the fixed wing community. But it also meant that I needed to fly with a lot more armor than everybody else did, because every insurgent with an AK was a threat to me. So that's part of that disconnect. I can be runway independent. And then when you go forward with an idea, it gets shot down because there's no cognitive connection to there are other ways to solve threat problems.
Right. So so was, I think you had, you kind of, you kind of addressed this in your presentation, but does Agility Prime have an enduring role, an enduring life? I mean, it was started as a response to what happened with drones. How do we avoid happening to EV toll with the happen to the drone industry? If we do not pay attention to it, if we do not give care and feeding to this industry, this nascent industry, it will go somewhere else. Now we're getting to the point where we are actually really on the verge of seeing great painted platforms, you know, on a military base. Do you call it job over at some point? Or does Agility Prime have this sort of longer role? And you kind of alluded here with second generation platforms, moving on to airspace and charging infrastructure. There is a longer vision for what this, for this, this thing is.
Absolutely. And I think that that Gen two is is kind of hinting at what we're doing with it. The program is designed to tech scout. And so you're going to find many performers. And those may apply to different mission sets and different units and different quantities of acquisition and different end users with different program offices to sustain those technologies. The program is designed to match those technologies or those platforms with a program executive office and then serve as an interim program office while we basically, we get our act together for it to go into a traditional program.
Right.
So that's, it's set up to be that that transition pipeline. So it's not sitting on the shelf or dying because there's no commercial market keeping it available. Now, we do encourage that absolutely. We still want most of these platforms and companies to have that commercial background and backbone, rather, so they can weather any funding storms or whatever else change over in command or politics or whatever else associated with working with the DOD. But yeah, we are set up to so that we have connectivity with those program offices and we can hand off this technology. While while we're doing this, though, we're learning a lot along the way. So we're not just learning or bringing in the platforms to to hand them off. We're also learning what may inform future requirements, right? So how can we pass off that knowledge, that information to all the requirements shops out there so they understand and are familiar with this new and emerging technology as it comes in? So there's kind of a parallel path of traditional requirements and but but feeding feeding that traditional path, but also giving a pathway to do something within a budgeting cycle or so very quickly and then how to do that without formal recognition from everyone and the DOD has, everyone can say no, right? It takes a consensus of everyone to say yes. So it's, it's how do you get past some of those initial nos so that we can feed the industry and have this capability later for much more capable platforms in the future.
And how is autonomy prime and, sorry, Agility Prime and autonomy prime going to be, are they going to be very closely linked going forward? They are also putting a proving ground together. And I mean, it's the same place, isn't it? I mean, it's it's Eglin. Which is Duke Field on Eglin, isn't it? I don't know. But so they're doing a proving ground, you're doing a proving ground. But are the two programs going to be very closely sort of aligned as you go forward? Because the EV toll guys want to pull on that autonomy. But you've also got all these other areas where autonomy is needed.
Absolutely. So originally, we had what we called the tech transition team within Agility Prime. We've pulled that out of Agility Prime and had it almost as a separate branch within Prime. So we have Agility Prime, Autonomy Prime, another prime, Integration Prime, which was recently approved. And then there's Orbital Prime. But that doesn't necessarily translate directly to what, it's not as closely related as autonomy and Agility Prime.
Right.
So, yeah, we have a techno- technology roadmap that kind of links the two programs together and a tech transition team that has attendance and cross-functional responsibilities to make sure that we're not stepping on each other's toes and we're talking to each other. We're have collaborative efforts within the prime division.
So Rachel, so you've, you're, I mean, the the challenge is wrapping up this month. So how have, you know, the results of your, the products you're estimating, but how have they been used? Have they already been used or are they, are they still being digested or have they?
So especially coming out of phase one, those products have been shared with different stakeholder groups. Coming out of phase one A, especially with that digital engineering perspective. We wanted to utilize it as a way for even government ourselves to understand how we could utilize digital engineering now that we're trying to incorporate that further. So we didn't require any specific digital engineering deliverables beyond artifacts and information. But we've been utilizing that to understand how could we even use that? How would we store it? How would we operate with it? In terms of a future capability like that. And then that information has also been shared widely that we've gotten to date to other different stakeholder groups, so.
How about the challenge approach? I mean, compared with a conventional market research RFI type of way of doing it, was there any learnings from doing it as a kind of a, not a prize challenge, but I mean, much more of a, an active kind of engagement?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, with your traditional market research, like an RFI, request for information, source of thought. Even with an industry day engagements, it was really great to be able to provide some funding to the contractors to have them really dig into the challenge and put some additional thought to it than what would normally kind of be done for an RFI. And especially over, you know, the the two-year period, being able to see these designs grow and evolve because we were able to interact this way, I think has been really important. Because we do see how things have been evolving. We do see things that at the beginning might not have seemed as possible as they were now. And I don't think that would have been possible with a traditional RFI approach.
What about any particular hurdles? I mean, were there any, doing it this way, was there anything that that were new hurdles or big hurdles that you had to overcome?
Not necessarily new. I mean, going into this, we weren't quite sure if a small demonstrator was even possible to prove out the feasibility of high-speed VTOL in general. But seeing some of the different capability and technology solutions that the wider industry audience has provided really kind of swayed the needle that we do actually think something is possible where it wasn't before. And I mean, that goes across from just propulsion, how the designs themselves are are created and some of the different they weren't necessarily related to the other two challenges, pacing technical challenges I mentioned. But they're, each design, because of how unique they were and how broad they were, had their own pieces that were, that really were uniquely solved, I guess I would say.
Questions? I'll keep asking if anybody speaks up. I'll keep, oh, there's a gentleman over there.
Hi, I'm David Ixted. I'm with Vertigo Arrow. So we were pleased to participate in both phase one and phase one A. It was a very positive experience for us. So thank you for the opportunity. I wonder if you could comment on the connection, if there is any connection between the HS VTOL program and what is now DARPA Sprint.
Yes, absolutely. So it, what we did does not directly tie into what the DARPA Sprint is. However, they were one of the stakeholders. We did share the information that we generated from our two high-speed VTOL phases.
Sorry. I'll come to you next.
It's not specifically a question, but I'll put out a statement and ask you to comment on it, please. Dan Newman worked for the Boeing company. As a solution provider, an aircraft configurator, what we really want is we want the objectives and then some trade metrics between. And speed's not really a require, a need, a mission need, but time is and range is. And so speed doesn't mean range. Sometimes they come together in certain configurations, but the real configuration drivers for us will be range, time, perhaps dark of night or something like that from which speed is derived, radar signature and some other mission suitability requirements like downwash. And what we really want is we'd like to know what your thresholds and objectives are and then the trade metrics between them. Because we have to trade them against each other. So interested in your comments on and 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 even the mission description so we can do the ops analysis to decide on those sweet spots and the diminishing returns on each of those metrics. Does your organization have a perspective that might provide those to us? Over.
Anybody?
Yep. Yeah, so that's actually something that we've been, we've had two successful programs, at least we call them successful programs. We're beginning another one where instead of us going through and a bunch of us military guys writing a requirement and then putting it out to industry and then figuring out who can best fill that. And then spending five, six years beating you over the head about meeting our requirement. We, what we're doing now is we're saying, hey, here is a capability gap. Who in industry has got an idea on how we can fill that gap? And then together, we're going to write that requirement and we're going to develop a program to start filling that gap. So much of the, and I think you're spot on where range is, or like, how long is it going to take me to get somewhere is is what's important. Like if I'm talking about CSAR, not necessarily how fast I can go. I can pick on a program. Two programs that I'm familiar with, one says, hey, you're really slow. I'm really fast. That's why I'm better. But then the other one goes and says, yeah, but I can take off in five minutes and it takes you an hour. So I'm already an hour down the road going slower by the time you even get airborne, if you get airborne. So so yes, there are many things that play into the, I need to get to the point of need in a specific amount of time. And there's old guys like me that have a very set idea on how I'm going to get it. And you have access to a lot more innovation that can come in and say that this is a better way to do that. What do you think? And and putting it in an environment where if, even if we disagree, you're not out. Right? We continue that collaboration and we continue to go through gates that allow us to get to an end, an end solution that everybody wins. I hope that answered.
What was two programs, by the way?
So NGAD and B21 are both programs that continued competition and collaboration with the, with industry as the program has progressed. So instead of downselecting, competition continues throughout the entire program.
So I don't know if it goes to what Dan was saying, but I remember when the Navy, when it was doing the, I think it was what became Triton, and it may have been one of the others. They moved to the metric of time on station rather than, they originally had put in sort of like a, you know, a range or a total endurance. And then when they went to time on station, which is really what they wanted, they ended up getting a different answer.
I can give you one example of an area where we really don't know how to do it differently, but you know, so for the 60W, it was very important that we could do a 10-minute hover at the, at the range and then make it back. That 10-minute hover is still based on the way that we do hover operations in the most stressing environment. So if from an industry's perspective, you're able to come back and say, here's how I can do that 10-minute activity in five minutes. Can we adjust the hover duration to five minutes? And if we can prove that out, then the answer is going to be yes. Because there's just a bunch of us that have done it a bunch of, over years, and we've, we know that in that most stressful environment, this is how long it takes. But but we don't necessarily have to do that for forever.
I'd like to say we and perhaps others would look forward to an opportunity to engage in workshop around the mission needs long before we ever get to a system requirement. Thank you.
Can I just ask about time scale? Because obviously, you know, the Air Force is, sorry, V22 is going out of production. The Air Force is trying to reduce the procurement numbers for HH-60. That kind of sets the clock running. You know, because you've got one platform that's kind of like going into a sustainment completely. And the other one, which isn't going to have the number of tail numbers it needs to do the the original thing. Doesn't that start the clock running for when you need something?
Yeah, so the I'm gonna have to be careful what we talk about, but the the validated requirement for CSAR was 149 aircraft. We said we were going to buy 113. Then we cut it to 65. OSD and Congress said, nice try. Now we're at 85. We'll see what number we actually end up with. But but there is still a mission need for additional airframes. And that's where we're looking at programs like what Agility Prime's focused on, what the high-speed VTOL could produce. Because we know we have additional space that we need to fill and we need to fill it fairly soon. But, you know, the we're also very focused on one, one or two regions in the world. And, you know, it seems to be, at least to me, every time there's people living next to each other, they like to fight. And there's people that live quite a few other places.
Yeah, yeah. The gentleman over there.
Yeah, thanks. Alfonso Lopez with Taisian. One thing I really like about panels like this is it brings folks together that may not necessarily talk to each other. And I like seeing the whole interaction and Agility Prime, you've been focused on electrical distributed propulsion, I know, for part of what you do. Whereas that really doesn't fulfill a lot of mission needs for Army or Air Force or anything else. But what lessons from that do you see going forward into next generation systems that do fulfill those needs? Because while distributed propulsion is really interesting, it's really only possible with electric right now, even though it could change a lot of fundamental aspects of how a mission can be done, including mixing range and speed potentially with some of these designs. So I just want kind of a a vision or collaboration or thought about how that could affect what's coming down the line. Thanks.
I think it's important to recognize that when these companies are bringing aircraft to the table, they're also bringing all kinds of other technologies associated with that aircraft, right? So they're building them with additive manufactured parts. So if we're 3D printing titanium parts that are structurally critical parts. Now we have airworthiness processes that need to be addressed so that we can accept those parts as as airworthy, right? So there's, there's structural things, then there's the flight controls. Most, most of our platforms are still require pilot and stick and rudder skills. If we have simplified vehicle operations, now how can we expand those simplified vehicle operations to other platforms and or autonomous operations to other platforms? So that's kind of why we broke off autonomy prime so that we could focus on what behaviors, what autonomous behaviors that people can code that are then applicable to multiple platforms and we can take those to multiple platforms and scale that specific part of the technology. So it's not that we're totally focused on the platform. It's that we have, they're bringing other technologies to the table. If they are bringing autonomous platforms to us, then they're also having to look at GPS denied degraded solutions. They're having to look at beyond visual line of sight applications and how you get that certified and through the FAA for national airspace operations. And they're looking for And they're looking for detect and avoid technologies, so radars, lidars, et cetera. So it's a whole ecosystem that's required to be a part of advanced air mobility. And I think that's, we're bringing all these other technologies to the table along with some of the platforms.
So, I mean, and since you started Agility Prime, UAM has evolved into AAM, which is a much broader set, you know, including longer range aircraft, some of which are, you know, and to some extent, that's what happened with the Challenge. You engaged some of, it's a kind of like a Venn diagram. There were some of the folks you engaged that were familiar with Agility Prime, some that weren't. I mean, is it, to continue that role, the role of Agility Prime in engaging the non-traditional, do you need to look at looking beyond, you know, EVTOL and electric at some of the innovation that's coming in larger aircraft or whatever? So is that something, you know, because it's, again, we are seeing innovation in that, you know, startups and things like that. Is that something you need at some point to look at?
First of all, as far as our relationship with HSVTOL, I see a lot of what the technologies we're developing are kind of stepping stones to get to HSVTOL in the future. But as far as the latter half of your question.
Is this whether or not you need to, you know, there is value or need to have a kind of agility prime, but that has a broader than just the original EVTOL focus of agility prime?
Right, the transformative.
Looking at a more transformative, advanced aviation as opposed to being kind of like a subset.
I think that's what the prime division in general is, can go after additional prime programs to look at other specific technologies. But I think we've kind of, we haven't broken it off as a separate prime, but the airspace team, battery energy storage solutions, they're still under Agility Prime, but they're almost like separate primes. We just don't have the manpower and bandwidth to go after full-on programs like we did for the VTOL specifically.
Thank you.
Hi, Stargan. I'm at NASA. And I'm making a shameless plug for my friend Mark Moore at Whisper Arrow. And we were just talking the other weekend about how a lot of the military requirements that come out don't set a goal for noise. Is there any particular reason why noise isn't one of the requirements?
I will tie that to that cognitive disconnect too. You know, like so somebody who's going deaf, the, the idea that noise signature is important, it's hard to get people who write requirements to understand. There's, there's some of us that get it, you know, if I'm creating noise, that's energy being expended to make the noise and not lift or thrust. So you know, yes, we would love to bring the noise signature down. But it's hard to capture a requirement like that. You know, and I've got experience with it, you know, looking at when people notice you flying up with your helicopter is very dependent on altitude. And when they hear you.
Well, your 10-minute might go to five minutes if you're not giving them 10 minutes notice you're arriving.
My experience is two minutes. Two, two minutes after they hear you, then they start shooting you. So you know, it would be great if they didn't hear me coming and I could use more of that for thrust instead of noise. But it's, it's finding a way to capture what we gain by focusing on the noise. And I can tell you, it's, the only thing that the DOD seems to care about with noise is what they're going to have to pay us in VA benefits when we retire. So figuring out a way to tie noise to mission capability is where we, you know, that's where industry can come forward with something and say, look, this is what we can do right now and this is what it buys you.
Back to the gentleman from Boeing, is maybe a workshop to tease out some of these requirements that industry has some feedback on?
Sir? Yeah, hi, I'm Mark Neese with Parametric Solutions here in Jupiter, small, non-traditional business engineering and manufacturing. And I was thrilled to be part of the supply chain working group, the AAM working group with PK and Dana. Early on, we met every month, a bunch of people. There was a database being developed with all the suppliers across, I don't know if that's still going on. I'm kind of questioned about that. And also, how do I make sure that I get involved in the DOT RFI?
So there is ongoing interest in continuing supply chain work from both OCEA, so Dana's office, and NASA, so PK. And we're looking to see how to fund those programs and to brief results of the previous actions. And I think as far as participation in the DOT working group, that is, your, your opportunity is to respond to that request for information because the working groups are pure government right now.
I think the, there was something went up in the federal register today about that. So, so I think something's gone up about the working group and the, and the request for, but I don't know what it involves at the moment. Something went up on the federal register.
Right. I apologize. I didn't come with a date of that release today. But I would definitely encourage people to continue to look for that Department of Transportation RFI.
Okay, thank you.
I might just ask you, educating the requirements community, or not educating, but I mean, you are the pointy stick of the technology and at the moment at AFWorks and Agility Prime. Is there a, is there a, is there like a workshop environment? Is there some way that you're feeding back into the requirements community what's out there and what readiness it's at? Is there a kind of, is there a process or is it kind of informal still at the moment?
I wouldn't say that there's a documented process that's being taught at a defense acquisition university level or anything like that. We are working with the Air Force Futures requirements shops and feeding them information as much as possible. So it's building a relationship there and then encouraging our, whoever follows us to continue those relationships so that we're informed of the current technologies that are available, that are out there, that we've looked at, the data that we have on those platforms or technologies and doing a share. How we can really make sure that that's projected to users is through wargaming. So there are many war games and future war games that we can put in either hypothetical platforms or existing platforms, depending on where you're looking in time scale, right? Are we looking in the next two years, next five years, 10 years, 20 years, right? And there's different war games associated with those time scales. So making sure that we have the right information to plug into those different exercises and war games.
Because I mean, you know, when, when I look at it from the outside, it's, you know, it's creating the pool. You have to create the pool. I mean, I've covered hypersonics almost my entire life as a journalist. And one of the first conferences I came to when I moved to the States was an AI AA hypersonics and space plate full of people who worked on the X30 program. And we did a massive amount of technology, but there was just this blank brick wall because the military didn't know, I don't know, they either didn't know what it was, they didn't know how to use it. And then of course, as soon as somebody else worked out how to use it, all of a sudden the pool comes. And I don't know how you create that pool. It goes again to what you're saying about mindsets. It's, it's, it's being able to think out of the box at the requirement side of thing and say, there's another way of doing this. Or, or we're open to another way of thinking.
The, the thing that I've watched happen is someone gets the stick to write the requirement and they go in and they say, I want a GAW21 50-cal machine gun. Figure out how to get me that. That's the requirement. And then the people that need to fill the requirement go in and well, why do you need the GAW21? And then, then you start getting into what should have been part of the requirement. And it's the, well, I need at this range to engage this threat. And then I need this probability of kill in this period of time with this reliability. Like, oh, well, you know, there's five other things that can give you that same thing. Well, no, no, the requirements for a GAW21.
Does it, can, somebody, well, you talked about digital engineering, but somebody this morning, I think one of the panels, I think it was on the Army panel, that were talking about model-based acquisition, you know, where the requirements become a model. I mean, is that a way around this? Where, because if you're in a paper environment, it's a lot easier to put GAW12 down on a piece of paper than it is to define a lethality envelope in three dimensions or something like that. Is, is this model-based, you know, requirements communication or requirements exchange a way to break out of that, that thinking? Or do we just default to putting in the box that, see, just put GAW12 in the box?
So the solution that we're going forward with on how to fix that piece of requirements is to include the biggest pool of people possible before you write the requirement. So instead of saying, I have a capability gap, I need to fill that gap by this time. So write me a requirement, which is all Air Force Futures. So if you go and you look at the A57, they have a website now where they talk about their Center 1, 2, and 3. And you can, you can read about that and good luck figuring it out. I kind of have a grasp of it. But instead of doing it entirely that way, we go out to industry and we say, who thinks they can help us fill this gap? Because all we've done is identified the gap. And then we've, we sit down together and we collaboratively figure out how to fill that gap. So what it does is it eliminates the, the one person writing the requirement saying, I like this gun. Or I like this wing. I like this type of solution. And then we're able to flesh out, here's, here are the, the real problem I'm trying to solve. Here are the constraints that we have. Who can come up with the best way to solve it? Some things are going to be hard, I think, for industry to wrap their mind around when they get into that environment. Because, you know, Bill may have the most contribution to identifying what the actual solution's going to be. But Jill's the one who had the, the best product to fill it. And those two companies are going to, you know, the next time we sit down together, they're like, man, I don't want to tell you my, I don't want to tell you my secret sauce.
Is there anybody else who wants to ask a question? I just wanted to finish up on the digital engineering. Have any, any, any sort of like, it may be a bit early, but any sort of thoughts on what you were seeing back on the, the learning on the digital engineering side when you were looking at what these companies were doing? Any sort of surprises or just sort of like, you know, thoughts about what, what was coming back at you?
Yeah, nothing, I guess, groundbreaking again. It was more learning for us to, I mean, we had basic desires to just understand how we would even store and work with this in a government space. So even on our side, we were looking at different repository systems. I mean, we're, we're still very new to digital engineering. I mean, if you ask a bunch of different people, I mean, even the three of us here, we probably all have a different assessment of what digital engineering is. So nothing, you know, super significant in that respect. But you know, talking to WASP about what he does with his AFWorks Agility Prime, we definitely want to get to more of a, you know, environment where we're able to bring in, you know, the different artifacts provided, have our own kind of governing system and be able to utilize the information that comes in to assess, kind of what Tron was just talking about, you know, what is the capability we're looking at, what are the different solutions? And how could those, you know, potentially work together to get after a larger integrated product versus the, you know, kind of stove piping we see right now?
So it's time to wrap up. I just double-checked and we do finish at 3:15. Any final thoughts before we go? Any closing, any closing messages for the audience?
The, the Air Force at the top levels of acquisition, so Secretary of the Air Force, SAE, are very, very keen on expansion of the industrial base that supports aviation, supports the Air Force. And most of the, the changes in our process that we're going through are to try and get capability faster, more relevant capability, but in a way that is more collaborative with industry, that grows industry. So that way, there's something there for us to use in the future. Eliminate, and you know, there's some things that are going to be very difficult. There, you know, we don't like vendor lock. We want to use digital engineering. We want to use open architecture. We want to provide the space for the large, large-scale production. But that, there can be small startups that are part of that and they're not absorbed and then eliminated from, from the industrial base. We want them to exist and if they want to stay small, stay small. If you want to get big, get big. But there is a future for a bigger, a more diverse industrial base that supports the Air Force.
So WASP is AFWorks generating a future workforce within the Air Force that's going to have that mindset? Going to understand that it, that it, that it can work?
I, I hope so. I mean, we're, a lot of the hires that we were able to get came from industry, came from other, other startups. So we had a good selection pool for the building of Agility Prime. From five people to over 70 people, right? So it's, I think we kind of stole from industry for this, for this initial go to make sure we had the most recent technological capability, engineering background, experience. I think from what my perspective is that the companies are out there and the successful ones that have raised the capital are paying good salaries to engineers to produce products quickly. And that is, that is what's building excitement and building kind of a momentum for the engineering base. So I think as far as the, on the, on the government side, it's pretty challenging to get that experience unless you're going out to industry and working with industry. Because we're not doing any, we're not really doing design of aircraft. Or we're not doing, we're not the prime integrators for platforms. And so a lot of the people that have grown up in the, in the government and the Air Force have not really had those experiences unless they've gone out to industry or startups or big OEMs. Doesn't, doesn't matter, but that's where they're getting a lot of the experience and then bringing that back to government, kind of having this exchange. Because right now, just back to the digital engineering thing a little bit, it's, there's not a whole lot of that experience in the Air Force, right? So when we need to go build networks and data lakes and all of these technological tools, we don't even know what requirements are needed for the IT infrastructure to support the tools to ingest the digital thread and be on the same page as some of our contractors. And we're spending lots of effort to get there. So the idea that we don't have those capabilities, and that is 100% accurate. We don't have the same expertise in the Air Force that you have in industry. We're getting it. So we are investing considerable sums of money to create those networks, to create those tools, to hire on the workforce out of the universities, to get them into the Air Force. So that way, the Air Force can go back to being an integrator and, and working with the larger companies, the smaller companies, doing the integration. In essence, build me a platform, build me a bunch of mission systems. We're going to do it in a way that all those mission systems work on that, those new platforms. And, and we have that expertise. So that way, when you build something in the digital environment, we're not asking you to print it in a PDF and turn it in. We want, we want to just look at you, what you have and then, and then say, okay, fine, let's move on now.
So what about Rachel? Is it on to another challenge? Do we, do we repeat this experience? Is it something you want, that we need to do again, or the Air Force needs to do again, do it the way that you've just done it?
So there are definitely, you know, upcoming, you know, challenges, campaigns. My team specifically, I mean, we're, we're technology agnostic. I mean, the specific one was high-speed vertical takeoff and landing. But we have campaigns, current and upcoming, that do span the horizon. But based on, you know, capability gaps and demand signals that we're hearing, I mean, I'm sure we'll be visiting something similar to this space in the future. And we are always posting those out on SAMBAC.gov. So it might not be high-speed VTOL in terms of what it is right now. The capability might look different in the future or the capability need, but. The, the capability might look different in the future or the capability need, but there, we're always putting out other, you know, efforts that we want industry solutions on, so.
Well, you've engaged, you've, you seem to have successfully engaged some non-traditional players that I deal with, so keep it going, don't leave them hanging out there. All right, folks, I'm going to wrap up at that point and thank my panel, Tron, Wasp, Rachel. Thank you, thank you.